Hello, everybody. I'd like to call the order, the City of Escalon Planning Commission Meeting of August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Can we start with the flag salute?
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We move along to roll call.
Chair Sarkozy.
Here.
Vice Chair Castellanos.
Here.
Commissioner Danziger.
Here.
Commissioner Strowman.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Okay, please note, all cell phones, pagers, and similar devices need to be turned off or silent or vibrate mode unless you're an on-duty emergency responder. And we have any presentations that have come up? Still none?
Still none.
Next is the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and will be approved with one motion. Are there any comments on the meeting minutes from the meeting of July ninth?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of July ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
No second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed five, zero. Now, we've got the public hearing about Project nineteen seven oh five, conditional use permit and variance at fourteen ninety-eight Genevieve Drive, APN two-two-seven-five-three-zero, zero-six-zero, zero-zero-zero. Doctor.
Thank you. The project applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit and variance to install a five-hundred-square-foot metal carport structure on the west sideyard of the house with no sideyards setbacks. Fourteen ninety-eight Genevieve Drive is Lot Six of the Sunrise Terrence Number Two subdivision developed by Avery and Hayes Incorporated and constructed in December of nineteen ninety-three as a single-family residential dwelling with a two-car garage. The lot is seventy-six-hundred square feet with the original house also constructed with a six-by-forty attached cover patio that was permitted under a separate permit application. The patio permit states composition shingle roofing as the roofing material, which was most likely constructed to match the home since they were built during the same period. The building permit was later issued in two thousand and seventeen to re-roof the home using comp shingles, and then again, another permit was pulled to install roof-mounted solar system. Both permits were completed and signed off by our city building official. The applicant has submitted the use permit and variance application requesting to install the five-hundred-square-foot metal carport on the west side of the house with no setback as shown in Exhibit A. The applicant desires to store his RV on the sideyard with a cover over it. The applicant's RV is approximately twenty feet, or excuse me, twenty-six feet long and is currently being stored in the city's RV storage area. City staff has discussed the project with the applicant prior to submittal advising of city code requirements that this project does not currently meet. We have inserted here the municipal code's general requirements for accessory buildings as follows. We should all be very familiar with those now. And in accordance with A number five, the proposed carport for fourteen ninety-eight Genevieve Drive is over four-hundred-and-fifty square feet, which requires discretionary approval by the planning commission in the form of a conditional use permit. The carport requires a variance to obtain approvals on the requirements A, two, three, four, and E, as the carport does not meet the city's setback requirements of five feet between the property line and the detached structure and five feet between the carport and the home. It is proposed with no setbacks on either side of it. The applicant is also proposing the carport be constructed of metal standing under fifteen feet in height, at least twelve feet in the drawing, and we'll get an exact measure on that as we move forward. Right now, it shows twelve feet, but it's not at the peak of the center of the structure, which we'll need clarification on in the future if this moves forward. Staff has advised the applicant that both city staff and the planning commission encourage materials that match or blend in with surrounding neighborhoods and that metal is typically an unacceptable material in project reviews and approvals. The city currently prohibits metal, whether corrugated, bare wire, barbed, razor, or smooth, as well as chain-linked fiberglass and unfinished plywood from being used when constructing fences and walls in all of the city's zoning districts. These materials are described in our municipal code as being of poor quality and unattractive in appearance. Not my words, code words. The applicant wishes to purchase the metal carport in the colors of fox gray for the body and polar white in the trim to match the paint colors of his home and the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant's property currently has a corrugated metal gate screening his sideyard approximately seven feet tall, assuming that the neighbor's wood fence is six feet in height. We do have some pictures, obviously, in the application. There are some potential concerns of city staff. Although the applicant advised that his neighbor on the west side of the property was fine with the metal carport installed against the property line, the city code considers future impact to the neighborhood and how both existing and new neighbors might feel towards it. The city recently amended its code, removing setback requirements on accessory structures one hundred and twenty square feet or less and limiting the height at nine feet. The proposed structure is obviously much taller and over four times that size. Also, in relation to code enforcement activities, the city has followed up on complaints by residents in the past regarding additions of metal carports to other residents' properties, and city staff has required residents in the past to remove them from properties to obtain code compliance. The findings required by the code, the following findings are required for a use permit and must be based on substantial evidence in view of the whole record. A, that the use is necessary or desirable in relationship to the purposes of the Escalon General Plan, title, economic and social, environmental status of the city. B, that the use will be properly related to other uses, transportation facilities, and other public facilities in the area will not cause undue environmental impacts related to noise, odor, pollution, et cetera. And C, that the use will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons living or working in the vicinity or be materially detrimental to the public welfare of the city or residents. Obviously, some of those would not apply in this case. The following findings are required for a variance. A, that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property or to the intended case which do not generally apply to other property in the same vicinity and under identical zone classifications. B, that the special circumstances relate to the property or use, not the financial or personal condition of the applicant nor to any self-imposed condition on the property that is the result of actions taken by the present owner or his predecessor. C, that the granting of the variance shall not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon the property in the vicinity and same-zone classification. And D, that the result would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. In terms of public outreach, a public hearing notice appeared in the Escalon Times on July thirty-first. We mailed out the notice on July thirtieth to every property owner and occupant within three hundred square feet, or excuse me, three hundred feet of the subject site, as noted in the latest assessors records. We received no phone calls resulting from the mailed public hearing notice. The project details were also mailed to all of our applicable local agencies and departments, and any of the responses received are attached to the staff report and/or incorporated into the conditions of approval for this project. The planning commission decision will begin a ten-day appeal period to which the commission's actions may be appealed to the city council or called up to council by a council member, which would expire at five PM on August twenty-third. If approved and there is no appeal filed within that time period, an applicant may proceed with the project. If denied and no appeal is filed, the decision of the planning commission is final. Staff has reviewed comments from all of the agencies and put together the following items to serve as the proposed conditions of approval. We recommend that the planning commission review them pending any modifications they may seek to include and/or remove. The following items would need to take place. We would open the public hearing and take any public testimony on the project, close the hearing and make any closing comments, make the findings as required per Section seventeen point one-six-point-zero-three-zero findings for use permits, make the findings required per Section seventeen point five-seven-point-zero-three-zero findings for variances, find the project's SEQA Class thirty-two categorically exempt under Section one-five-three-three-two infill development project, and authorize the staff to file the notice of exemption, and then consider the approval of the use permit and various applications with the conditions of approval as proposed by below or as modified by the planning commission. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We can also review the conditions of approval. We've made some modifications to how those are presented. So, we are classifying the specific approvals, which would be in relation to the approval that the conditional use permit and variance would run with the land and that if approved, as presented, it would be for exactly what the applicant would be asking for unless modified by the planning commission. Number two would address the variance and conditional use permit validity, and that if they wanted to modify the improvements in any way, a new application or amendment would be required. And then we do have an item on there regarding outdoor storage. An area for outdoor storage must be suitably screened from adjoining property and public right-of-way by a wall, dense evergreen of hedges or trees, or solid fence no less than six feet high. That's added in just to make sure that at any time this moved forward, that that area would be screened with a fence, which we typically wouldn't require if you weren't having anything stored outside. And then PG&E did provide comments regarding installing a barrier post to protect the gas riser on the property. The other conditions that are listed are our standard conditions regarding use limitation, the use of property, change in occupancy or use, section on our building permits, comments from the building department where the permit details must be stamped inside by the engineer for the attachment of the carport to the existing slab, our standard language regarding contamination, code compliance, SEQA, which was filing the notice of exemption, our hold harmless and indemnification, compliance with all of these conditions, any construction hours, maintenance, hazardous materials and how they should be taken care of if they are present, fees, business license if applicable, and lighting if applicable.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this point?
I do. Thank you. The paragraph here that reads, "In relation to code enforcement activities, the city has followed up on complaints by residents regarding the addition of metal carports to other residential properties. City staff has required residents to remove them from their properties to obtain code compliance." These aren't allowed, right?
No, we're in our code. Does it specifically say that metal carports are not allowed, but we do have language in the municipal code that requires fencing and walls that prohibit metal. Nothing specific to carports, per se, and in the past, I had let the applicant know that they do not typically blend in with the surrounding communities, and that's what the city is looking for. And we do have some language in the municipal code asking that things blend in with your surrounding neighborhood. But specifically, they aren't banned no-metal carports. We have since then talked to council regarding carports, metal, and it's my understanding at the last meeting when we discussed that because we've had some other issues with code enforcement related to metal carports, that they do not wish to have them in front yard setbacks, that they would be of materials, if they're visible, made of materials that match the housing. But our applicant was still willing to submit an application and try to go about it the right way of obtaining a permit, if possible.
The last sentence just jumped out at me. It says, "City staff has required residents to remove them from their properties to obtain code compliance."
And in most-
Would we do that today? I mean, if somebody complained about one of these on a sideyard, would somebody from the city go out and make them remove it?
So, there's a difference. The ones that we have, and I probably, I should have worded that better, the ones that we have been requiring to take them down are also unpermitted, but they also happen to be metal carports. So, that's actually, I should have added that in there. I don't think we've ever had any taken down because they were metal. They just happen to be metal, but they're also unpermitted.
Didn't meet the setbacks.
They didn't meet, or they didn't meet setbacks. And so, that's majority-related. I'm sorry, that's a misquote. I should have figured out a way to say that more. We've never had anybody apply for a permit for a metal awning, really.
So, if this was made out of wood, it would be only, other than the setback?
The material-
Material.
Doesn't, but it doesn't make a difference. He would have-
He would still have to come here for setbacks and size, yeah. But I had advised him when he was submitting that in the past, especially when it came in terms of new development and things that are being constructed, that our planning commission and staff have typically required something other than metal or, and also in future development projects, that we've required anything metal to be covered in stucco. So, I advised him of that just because it is staff's interpretation at planning commission level that that metal's always been something that has always, we've always asked for something more than that or required something more in terms of a conditional use permit and the discrepancy for it.
It looks like the current gate out there is metal.
The current gate is metal, yes.
Is that allowed?
That is not allowed according to our municipal code, yeah. Fences, hedges, walls.
But you don't address it unless somebody complains?
Well, we didn't notice that until Friday, and so, nobody has complained about it yet, no.
Okay. Lastly, under the environmental information, it looked, somebody, they stated that, "I plan to install a temporary carport structure," and it lists the size, "on the west side of my property, my personal trailer trailer, and keep it off the streets." Temporary, so...
So, in terms of temporary, I know that Mr. Reese is saying temporary in the aspect that it's not permanent. It's something that can be taken down. It's not, it's not on a, installed into the ground so much as secured to the slab. So, a lot of people view that as being temporary. For us, in a planning perspective and building perspective, temporary is limited to time. We don't usually relate it to it being a temporary structure. That being said, because he's requesting a conditional use permit and a variance on the setbacks, if it was something that the planning commission was open to, you can address it in any way you want since it's discretionary, limiting the time that it's up. Truly, in any way that you would want to do. There's some other options that Diana and I have discussed. If they were coming up, would be requiring it to be taken down upon transfer of ownership, those type of things where we would put it into the use permit and apply it at that time. But temporary to us is more along the length of time that it's up, not so much that it's permanent or not permanent. But it can be viewed as temporary because it's not a hundred percent put into the ground, which makes it much more difficult to remove, so.
I just look at the situation, and I've been to most of every council meeting here for the last twelve years, and this comes up periodically along with some other code enforcement issues, and nobody has ever been behind this kind of thing. They've always been put up without a permit. People ask, "Why are they allowed to have them?" My neighbors asked me that, and I told them, "Whoa, whoa, you know, go talk to the city and find out about that because, as far as I know, they're not allowed, and I don't want to tell you something that, you know, the city's going to come back and tell you, 'No, you can't do.'" So, I'm a little leery at this point, saying anything about anything because I don't think the council's made up their mind.
Yeah.
And this could just, maybe this could push it to them to make up their mind. I don't know.
And it's difficult as well because sizing of the lots, we don't have a lot of lots that are large enough in size to where they meet the setback requirements, and so typically, if somebody puts this type of structure in their yard, they usually, it usually is taking up the entire sideyard, which makes it difficult. We talked about the five-foot setback and how he wouldn't be able to put it up at all if he needed to be five feet away from the fence and five feet away from the house. And then also, they're unable to attach those to the house, which makes it difficult. And so, that's another reason why they're typically unfavorable at a staff perspective because you can't get around those type of things when it comes to them because they come in certain sizes and they're prefabricated. So, we did advise him that it would be a tough sell, but in his defense, he's applying for a permit, he's applying for the use permit, he's going through the process, which I'm sure there are many of them out there that probably have not gone through that process. Obviously, a lot in the last three years since I've been here, so.
Yeah.
So, he was willing to take a chance and see if there's something we could do with that.
I have a question.
Sure.
I didn't see any responses from the fire chief on, you know, the distance between the structure and the residence and the fencing. There's no concern from the fire department?
I talked to the fire marshal, and he says in this residential application, he's got no comments.
Has no comments. Yeah.
Yeah, my question was on that same, the same paragraph about asking, you know, the residents to remove the property, what you just stated, to obtain code compliance. Just in our neighborhood back here, I mean, I've seen two of them that I can just picture my mind's eye. So, I'm just wondering if those have been permitted, I mean, they're metal. They're exactly like what is being shown here. If they're not permitted, you know, has that been taken into, have you reached out to them to deal with that? Because I'm struggling with, you know, these, and I'm just one little area over there. They're probably all over the place. You know, struggling with, he's doing the right thing coming to us, but yet, you know, if he was to just put it up like these other, like other people possibly have, you know, and no one complains, then he has his storage. So, I'm kind of torn also of the direction. I'm also wondering, you know, on the setbacks, if, you know, with rainwater, if, you know, if gutters are installed, if that makes it any more desirable because at least you're controlling the rainwater off of it. It doesn't address the fire, any fire comments that weren't made. So, that's my comments.
And so, and another item related to that as well is because most people think that these structures are temporary. A lot of people are under the assumption that they don't require building permits, and so, that's another reason that they don't come to the city asking or replying for a building permit because, "Oh, it's a temporary structure. It's easy to take down or it's easy to pop up." But our code doesn't, also doesn't make a determination between what's temporary and what's permanent. We just say that all carports or accessory structures over a hundred and twenty square feet or, you know, within the setback or such require permits. And so, that's a lot, that's probably majority of the ones that are located in town unpermitted are thinking that they're temporary, therefore, I didn't know I needed a permit for them, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, so at this point, at seven-twenty-four, we can open it up to the public hearing. Please state your name and address.
Peter Crummick, fifteen hundred Tamaracourt. Good evening, commissioners and staff. I'd just like to make a quick comment. Joe is kind of my neighbor around the corner, and if you ever drive by kind of that area, you'll notice the nicest house, the nicest landscaping, the most well-manicured is his house. I think he's, you know, through his efforts and has probably single-handedly raised the property values of everybody around him because of how well he maintains his property. And if you look at that metal gate, it's kind of interesting that it's not permitted. That's kind of, you know, that's kind of in style now. That's what people want, these cool corrugated metal gates, and his is immaculate. He's coming to, he's going through the right steps and not just doing it on his own, which could be done. And we all know that if he was to do it just on his own, we would never be able to enforce him, have him take it down because it just doesn't happen. So, I would, you know, I would give some credit to that. And just, I'd like to say again, his property is immaculate, and it's the nicest one around. I'm sure that this structure he's going to put up is gonna, is only going to add to that. And so, that's, I would like to just make that comment since I live kind of around the corner from him. So, I've always noticed, I've told him multiple times, "You have the nicest house, man. What's going on? It's amazing." So, everything they do is good. So, I would encourage the planning commission to approve the conditional use permit for this structure. Thank you.
Mr. Crummick?
Oh, yeah.
Just a comment. If this metal corrugated gate is kind of the standard now, you may want to talk to your city council member and have them amend the- want to talk to your city council member and have them amend the Escalon, or make a suggestion to amend this Escalon municipal code for this style of gate.
Well, I understand that, and I, I thought about that, I was like, well, if it's, but I think what the code was trying to get at was, there is, metal is obviously a pretty loose term, you could put a metal gate up and it could look like a, like a junkyard gate, or you could put a cool, it's, you know, the building materials, it depends on how you put it together. Theirs is lined with that, you know, kind of that black steel or whatever it is, it's just, it depends on how you put it together, so... But I, I will take that into consideration, and we can think about that. But like I said, their, their property, it's, it's literally the nicest house in the entire neighborhood, so I'm sure that, that they know what they're doing, and it's going to look good. So, I would just consider that when you make your decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
You have anything, Joe?
No, I don't have, no, no comment, but you guys mentioned, you know, the, the...
You could come up to the, come up to the mic just so we can hear you, yeah.
And just, just state your name and address again for the...
I'm Joe Reese, property owner almost 20 years. I bought the house shortly out of high school, and last, since 2014 till now, I've just been investing all my money in my property and painting, putting new roofs, solar, pretty much doing all the work myself, just because I got the people in my office that are willing to help me do it as well. So, all I'm trying to do is, you know, this is my second travel trailer that I've owned since 2006, and my first one got pretty well, weather beat, you know, from the weather, and I'm just trying to protect it, and, and I'm, pretty much the metal building I'm putting up is going to match the house. I'm not going to make it look like a corrugated front, like, like my gate, it ain't going to be chrome and stand out, it's going to match the surroundings I got around my property, and like I said, I'm just trying to keep my neighborhood looking nice, and I do get a lot of compliments from all my neighbors, want me to help them fix up their place as well, so...
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the applicant. If your travel trailer is 26 feet long, why does this have to be 50, why does this carport have to be 50 feet long?
Because from the back corner of my house to the, to the, to where the gate is, it's, it's, it's actually like 52 feet, and I'm just trying to utilize that spot. I'm trying to back my travel trailer all the way back and then have room for a boat or a car in the front. That's why I went with the 50-foot-long carport, I mean...
I'll be honest with you, if this was about half the size and pushed to the further back, I would have a lot more warm and fuzzy feeling, but given that it is right at the gate and you drive down Genevieve Drive, I mean, you're going to see it as soon as you come around the corner.
And like I said, in the last two years, I, I redid all the fencing around my whole property, so the whole fence around my property roughly seven feet tall. So, I mean, it is going to stand up in front of that gate a little bit, but I don't think it's going to be enough to where it sticks, where it's going to stick out that much, because it's going to be open in the front, just the sides is going to be the part where my, my side neighbor is going to be able to see, but the farther front, it says, you'll be able to see the front of the trailer, and I don't think it'll stick out as far, as bad as you think it will be.
My, my only other concern is, being 50 feet long and looking at the site map PV1 that you provided...
Uh-huh.
I see a, the potential for a major fire life safety issue, in that if the fire department were to ever have to gain access to that side of your property, they can't get in. Because if, if you, I mean, they would open up this fence and have to go in, let's say you park a, a boat there, or a trailer there, or, or a car, and something just happens to catch on fire, there is, there's no, no separation from where your carport is to the residence, and I see a serious concern if something were to catch on fire, what, it could spread to your dwelling almost immediately.
Well, hopefully the metal building don't catch fire, but anything that would catch fire would be the trailer, but hopefully that don't happen either, so... There's still, when I had my trailer there before, I brought it here because I brought it here so I could do the work around my house, and I paid for storage, but with the trailer there, you still have access to both sides. Like I said, as far as the, from the house to the carport and the carport to the fence line, I can see what you're talking about as well.
I had the same concern. Your trailer's probably eight feet wide and that's 10 foot there on the side of the house. Trailers are notorious for being combustible. I was looking up some statistics, there are more than 6,000 RV fires in this country every year, and half of them are when, is when the RV is stationary and not moving. You've got the engine, you've got the refrigerator, you've got several components that are easily combustible in that trailer. And if you've got it right up next to the house, that, that doesn't constitute a safe situation. And even if the fire marshal isn't going to say that there's a problem, I, I think there's a problem. You've got a fire crew trying to respond, and they can't get in your backyard.
Well, they also, on my side yard, there's a full access seven-foot-wide gate that they go through, right through the backyard as well.
That brings up another point, why not put the RV in the backyard off of Chalane?
Oh, I'd have to change my whole landscape or the whole place.
Regardless of the carport, he could still park his trailer on the side of the house. So, the car, the carport doesn't cause those additional issues?
Yes, that's true.
Because he could still park it there?
Could still park it there.
That's where it was before I did all the work on the side yard, that's where I kept it all, you know, since 2006.
But if you had the trailer or the RV or whatever in the backyard, you'd be distant from the house, you could be, you know, you'd have the right setback from your back fence.
Well, most of those fires are caused, if you read on them, is because people plug them in and leave them plugged in. My trailer, when I park, even if it's parked here, I disconnect the battery and the propane bottles, and there's nothing running because of that issue, because I've heard of trailer fires that way, but I don't plug my trailer in just because it's parked. The only time it gets plugged in is when, when it gets pulled out and gets ready to go camping. So, I never have power on the trailer at all when it's on the side yard.
And now, this is, it says, there's one condition in here when it says there's no alternative, but you've got the alternative of parking it here.
Well, I got to, I got, I could park it there too, it's not an issue. I just, I'm just trying to protect it, that's all I'm trying to do.
You don't, it's not protected here?
No, it's out in the open.
You don't have a cover over it?
No, those things ruin the trailer. I mean, I could put a cover on my house and keep it in the side yard and be next to my house as well. So, it's, it's more protecting the trailer. I've done covers, they, they, they trap the heat, they melt my vents, they, my logos peel off of them, they actually destroy the trailer more than what you would think, but like I said, it's, I'm just trying to keep my stuff looking nice, and that's the only reason why I'm putting this, trying to do it, trying to go through the proper channels to do it right. I don't want to put it up and then three years from now, I get a letter sent to take it down, and I spend four grand on a building I got to throw away, and I don't want to go that route.
Joe, what side of the, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
Oh, I can follow you.
On your existing shed, what side are the doors to access?
On my shed?
Yes.
It's on the nor, it's on the south side, right in the middle.
So, it faces...
Faces, it faces towards the, the, the area where I'm going to be doing the carport. And it's just a little 10 by 12, it's a small little tough shed, it's not, not big.
I'm just wondering if, if you could push this whole area back?
I don't want to, see where my house is, where the little, where, where the, the carport ends, up to behind my house?
Yep.
I don't want to lose that, you know, my grass area and my, my, where we hang out, barbecue, and I don't want, I mean, I can, but it's just, I don't want to go further back than I have to.
Okay.
You don't want to have an eyesore back there for you to look at, but the eyesore could be out in the front for everybody else to look at?
Well, you're not going to be able to see it, I don't, I don't think you'll be able to see it as, as bad as you think it's going to be.
Well, like if you're driving down Genevieve, yes, you're going to see it.
I think if I backed that thing up, all the way back like you guys talked about, I think you're going to, from Chalane, you're going to have, you're going to have 31 feet exposed from Chalane, you'll see it a lot more than you would, you would in the front of the house.
Trees back there.
I only got one tree. It's, that, that, the, the, there was two trees years ago, but four years ago, these are old pictures, aerial shots. The house doesn't now look like that anymore. There's only one little tree on the north, the northeast corner of my property in that backyard, it's a little baby tree.
That's the most updated photo we can get off Google for the aerial.
That's like 2014 or 12, whatever it is.
Probably 12, yeah.
I'll come back in here, and I'm still conflicted, I, I congratulate you coming through this process there. Most people don't, so it's, it's refreshing to see somebody, you know, a citizen come in and, and do the proper permitting through these things. On the other hand, as I said before, I don't feel comfortable even reviewing this and allowing it, and then having the, having the city come out and send you a letter because it's not allowed. And, and it can be changed, those things can be changed by council, but right now it isn't, and there was discussion at the last council meeting, I believe one of the council members had 44 pictures that he was willing to show, saying these things aren't allowed. And I feel very reluctant to tell any citizen, go ahead and do that. My neighbor next door has a 28-foot trailer, he's got more setback than you do, and he asked me about that, that particular thing, and I said, "I can't tell you to do that as a planning commission member and as somebody sworn to uphold the ordinances of this town, I, I can't tell you to go do that because, you know, it wouldn't be right, somebody's going to come by and tell you not to put it up." I've got a trailer, I've had four trailers since I've moved here, and I have about the same amount of room on my side yard as you, but I refuse to put it there because it junks up the neighborhood, even though it's brand new, looks good. I go and I park mine over in Manteca. So, my question to you is, is this a financial thing?
No, it's not a financial thing, it's just, I got that spot, that spot there in the corner in the back, I just figured I'll use it up. I mean, I went kind of a little by, I went 10 by 50 just because I figured I'll use that space, but I didn't really ask if it was going to be that big of a problem. If I had you, I would have went, you know, the size of the trailer, you know, and, and with my trailer all the way back, you know, that's 50 foot, if you go 26 foot off the back, I mean, that, that tells you how far away from the gate I'm going to be if I go all the way back with my trailer. So, I, my trailer goes, tucks way back in that you can't see it from the street. So, it's never been an issue before. It just, I was just trying to utilize that spot, that's all I was trying to do, and I...
And, and I appreciate that. I, I, there's, has been a, a time where somebody put one of these up and immediately had to take it back down, and, and...
But they didn't come to here either.
No.
It wasn't permitted and it didn't meet setbacks, yes.
There was a complaint, there was a complaint issued, it was at a council meeting, and the city council people were trying to get away from it by saying, "Well, when the person was up talking, we don't act unless there's a complaint." He said, "Consider this a complaint," and boom, down it came. And I don't want that to happen to you. The person to your immediate west, and I drove by your neighborhood, I went through it, and it's a very nice house, and it's a nice neighborhood, you, you're not the only one there.
Correct.
There's one other one around the corner from you, and it's way in the back there, and I don't, I'm just saying, there is one out there, and, you know, you'd actually be, the people on your west, that's the side of their garage, they, they really can't see you. But the people behind you and across the street, you know, I don't know, we haven't heard from them, and, and as it says in the report, you don't know who the neighbors are going to be, you know, coming down the road, and temporary, you know, you're going to remove it. We've had discussions with, I know I've been at that podium and, and suggested that the real estate agents in this town be reviewing this issue and be forced to tell prospective clients before they sell their house, they got to remove their, their carport, I mean, if you're interested and you're serious about this matter. So, I have a hard time, you know, wrestling with this thing here, you, you're doing it right. Unfortunately, you know, there's no setbacks on this, and we've gone through setback issue after setback issue this year, most recently with the fireplace, and, you know, it was going to be one foot nine was proposed from a rear fence, and it's just, no, it's not going to make it. We, we even cut back the other setback to three feet, and I don't know whatever happened with that, but, you know, zero setback, and like Barbara was saying, you know, we don't care what the fire marshal says, that may just be laziness, I don't know. That, I was in the fire department before I retired, and I would have, I would have had something to say. I, I think it's just, you know, common sense that you have to have a, a way around it. I can appreciate the fact that you, you know, you want it, you want it stored at your yard, and you can do that, but the container over the top, you know, right now, I don't think is permitted. It's, it's not a permissible thing, is it?
Well, but that's what's before you tonight is to grant that permission for the variance. So, if you guys did approve it tonight, we wouldn't go back to him and say, "You need to pull it down."
I said it at the, I said it at the last meeting, and I'm going to say it again, we shouldn't be legislating through variances. If it's something that the city council wants, it's something that, you know, the citizenry want, change the code. If you, you're doing it here, then, then, you know, somebody's going to go out and tell somebody else to pull one down, I, I just don't feel comfortable with that. You know, it, it's kind of evading an issue. You know, if, if it's an acceptable thing for the community, then, then make it so. You know, I, I don't feel good with the variances on the fact.
Can I make a comment real quick? I think that if, I, I agree with you, it's, it's a sticky situation, right? There's people that put them up, they don't get permitted, we, we don't enforce it, it just kind of, there's this weird cycle. And I hear your comments about the council, we need to address it one way or the other, you know, there's lots of, there's lots of code enforcement issues that we just don't get to because of man, you know, lack of manpower. But I would say, in this case, given the property owner and how well they maintain their property, the fact that other property owners in town do not even come here, they don't even seek a, a variance, and they do it, and we don't enforce it, by not approving his plan, we would be, you know, punishing a good citizen doing the right thing, and I think that that would be worse than saying, "Well, now we're going to enforce it," because, you know what I'm saying? You got to pick the lesser of two evils here, I think.
Actually, I don't. I appreciate you standing up for your neighbor, but I stand with what I just said, and until that gets changed, I, I really feel that, you know, you need to pursue changing the ordinance before you go put that up there. You know, you have a trailer, I have a trailer, you have a different way, you want to put it on your side yard, I, I don't, you know, and, and there are these structures up there, and they shouldn't be, and maybe the city will send out letters to everybody that they see at, at some point, but, you know, knowing what we know, I can't just, you know, turn my back on it. We're sworn to uphold the ordinances, and, and I don't feel good about legislating through variance, you know? It's the code according to me, and I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that.
I understand, I just want to make that comment.
Commissioner Castellanos, any questions?
Well, I have a question. In reading the three of eight, we're, we're talking about the structure stands at least 12 feet tall. Is that 12 feet to the peak or to the side, or...
If you look at the plan, which we've got labeled, hold on just a sec.
To the eve, Steve.
Where is my, oh, on the backside.
12 feet to the corner.
So, you're looking at the backside of the, of the larger sheet. It points the 12 feet at the top of the corners before it curves into the roof.
Okay.
So, my experience with carports is that it might go up another foot or so, but we put that language in there, no taller than 15 feet, because our municipal code currently does not allow anything taller than 15 feet.
Okay.
And I doubt, and I strongly doubt that it would be three feet taller, so as long as it stays under 15 feet, which I'm very confident it would be, it doesn't need an additional approval for that.
We've got a seven-foot fence, and we've got, let's say, a 13-foot-high structure, so there'd be five feet exposed.
Correct.
Right? That's my math.
Six. Four six, yes.
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned, I, I'm concerned about setbacks and fire issues and all that. You know, I was concerned with the fireplace only being a foot and so many inches away. This structure is going to have, what?
Zero.
Well, it's got to have something, you got to be able to fasten the stuff up.
The, the drawing shows 10 feet, and that shows 10 feet.
Okay. I, I wish the fire marshal would have responded to this, you know. I know steel doesn't burn, but once it gets going, it's really hard to stop it, right fire people?
Well, the twin towers came down.
Yeah.
Everything burns.
I, you know, it looks great, the metal fence, I drove by your house, it looks, it looks... I, I, you know, it looks great, uh, the metal fence, I drove by your house, it looks, it looks really nice. Um, I'm concerned about, again, how close it's gonna be to the front of your house. And the visual of, you know, that you, your street's kind of the, that corner's kind of the gateway driving in. You either make a, a left turn in front of your house, or you go past it, you know? I, I, I'm just...
Are there, are they allowed to put these structures in the back lot here?
No.
Why not?
Is it our property?
Yeah. I mean, it's just unsecured uncovered parking, and that's how we advertise it, so we don't expect anybody to come in and do anything that, other than a cover, if they wanna put a cover over theirs, if they plan on leaving it there longer periods of time.
I know where I parked mine, there are quite a few of these in, in that rental yard, where people have done this. And so with the new rental yard coming up, there may be an opportunity to put these up out there, right?
Well, I'm sure there's also the hope that there'll be another building out there at some point, and a different use. It's just, this is just gonna be in the interim.
I have a quick comment, sorry. If, if, just wearing my city council hat, if it did come back and we changed the, uh, the ordinance or the code to approve metal buildings for this specific use, if we did that, you wouldn't have a problem?
I, and you'd have to address your setback issue too, because it would be a building. So there, there's two things there. One, yeah, these things haven't been permitted up to this point, that's why you're looking for a variance. And two, there's a setback issue.
For the fire?
Which is, yeah, the health and safety of that area.
Okay.
Because again, this is, from the picture, it's ten feet wide, and from his drawing, it's ten feet wide. There is no, there's no inches here.
Pete? Pete, I don't know if you're aware, but the current municipal code says you have to have a five-foot setback.
Right, that's what we're doing here, is trying to seek a variance for that, right?
And that's the, that's the whole crux of the issue, you're going from five foot to zero.
There is a house around the corner from me, around the other side. So, so Joe's kind of around to the right when you exit my neighborhood or my street, and there's a house around to the left, and, and the person is parking their RV at a diagonal in their front yard, where it's going basically across their entire front of their house. And that's probably allowed, and it, it looks terrible, and they don't have a place on the side. And so I understand what Kurt's saying about legislating through ordinances. I agree, it's a problem. I would also stress, though, that you guys take, uh, put a lot of weight onto the fact that, that this guy's got the nicest house in the neighborhood. Everything that he has is immaculate, and he's going through the process correctly. And he's already addressed some fire issues, he, he's already researched why fires start, which is a big concern. That he's got a higher-than-average fence, which, which is beautiful. I mean, we, we just can't punish good citizens and let the bad ones go that are putting up crappy metal fences and not doing things, not even coming here. So I'm, I'm just saying, I understand the pickle, but, you know, it's a small town, it's Escalon, right? So we gotta do what we gotta do. And we have a great citizen here doing it the right way, with a beautiful house. Are we gonna say no? I mean, and we're gonna let these other people go? I don't have an answer. Because I don't know how to enforce those other things either. That's a code enforcement thing, that's a staff thing, that's a time thing, it's a money thing. But he's doing it the right way, so...
And there is the maintenance condition in the use permit, that at any time if we, because he's got a use permit, if we thought that it was being unmaintained, or starting to look deteriorated and such, we could address that, asking that it be replaced or addressed, or you can revoke the use permit and take away that, that privilege.
What would you do right now, Dominic, if somebody walked and ran around this town, took pictures of all of these structures that are up currently, and then filed a, a bunch of letters to you complaining about them? What would the city do?
We would investigate each of those complaints. Um, the first item being whether it's permitted or unpermitted. The second item being whether it meets the setback requirements. And they would all receive letters, um, either a courtesy to start out, depending on the number. We would probably end up sending out notice in order to abate, and we would typically give somebody thirty days, uh, to meet those requirements, uh, which would be, it either needs to, we give options, it either needs to, you need to obtain a permit for it, your setbacks need to be at the five feet away from the, the structure, five feet away from the, um, property line.
And if they couldn't meet that?
If they couldn't meet that, we'd ask them to remove it, um, from the location. And so in that case, out of however many we'd have, we typically would get one or two of them that would come in stressing the need for them. And then at that point, we would tell them, you either have to apply for a variance or a use permit, determining what the factors are. And then we'd have them go through that process, like we're doing now.
I, I, I think you need to take this issue up and put it on the agenda for the council.
Okay.
And, and let's get it decided, one way or the other, because you either have criminal activity out there in, in the city, or you wanna change the, the ordinance to not have that situation. But again, you're, you know, this isn't up against a school where nobody can see the, the garage. It's not, you know, up against a, uh, an easement way with a gas fireplace, you know? This is in the neighborhood there. And granted, these things aren't, I, I don't know why we couldn't go out there and do these kind of code enforcement things when they're obvious. And, and as Peter was saying, there's, I know there's somebody, I think it's on Mesa, that's got a little travel trailer, the thing can't be more than fourteen feet, but it's across the whole front of that driveway. It's, it's right there on the sidewalk. That can't be allowed, it's gotta be twenty feet away, as far as I know. And nobody's stepping up and doing anything about that. It, but it doesn't make it right. He can't come in and ask for a variance for that, you know? Because he doesn't have anyplace else to put the thing, because they do. You can, you can get storage, so, anyway.
So in response to that, that feedback, um, I mean, we could go to council and ask how they feel, if they, if they feel that the code should be amended to allow for metal structures such as those. And you could table this item to another meeting. Um, there's, there's options on that. I mean, in terms of variances, everybody in town has the right, if they're gonna encroach on that five-foot setback to apply for the variance. That's just a process we have in the code, it's a common process that all cities have. Um, and it's discretionary. If the planning commission finds it something that they're willing to do, um, and it just ultimately depends how you feel as a whole, that's a process that, that each of the residents are allowed as well. And if it's approved, it's approved. Um, it's, in his case, he's got the, the use permit as well. Um, those can be added to any conditions that you want them to meet, regarding temporary structure, regarding anything you wanna do. That's, that's a process that all cities have as well. These are processes that cities use and make people go through those processes to obtain those permissions and approvals. Um, so I, but I definitely, I mean, we've talked to council about other items regarding them in the front yard. It was my understanding that they don't want them in the front yard, at least not metal. They're, they're open to certain extents with no garages and whatnot. They don't want metal in the front yard, but as opposed on being on the side yard and backyard, that hasn't been discussed yet. Um, and we don't have anything specifically prohibiting metal awnings, from being in, in the backyard. But we've never had anybody apply for a permit for one. And typically, the ones that are unpermitted are also in violation of the setbacks in terms of, they have not applied for a variance and gone through the process to, process to obtain that variance.
Right.
Or approval, so...
My understanding, what came through the council meeting, was we were talking about things in the front yard. Somebody putting up a metal structure over their driveway does, is not the same as them putting up a metal structure on the side of their house that's hidden behind a fence, in my opinion.
Yeah.
That's what we were talking about. And if there is fifty to a hundred of these violations out there, say the city decides to crack down, we send Justin out, we say, start writing fines, this chamber gets full of people, now we decide, okay, how hard are we gonna fight this? I mean, that's the question. How, how much money are we gonna take from people? How, how, what kind of legal action? What, what are we gonna do? We gonna start knocking fences down?
You, you're looking at it one way, though. He could, he could just say, uh, putting his trailer out here, he could put it in the new, uh, lot that's gonna be built, he could come over where I am, over in Manteca. Because I, you know, I, I personally feel, uh, something for my neighborhood, that I don't wanna stick my, my fifth wheel along the side of the house there. It just, it just junks the place up in my...
I got you, I hear you, and I appreciate that. I just say, it, we're so far down this path, it's, you know, and how would we enforce that? What would that look like? And I, I think that, honestly, in this case, whether or not, I mean, if you would take it all the way back to the beginning, and the city had this code in place, and maybe it did, and this has just happened over time, as people do these things over time. But again, I'm just saying, if we deny, you know, his application, and we just simply cannot enforce it on these other people because of lack of manpower, resources, or whatever, it seems to me like an injustice, even though it seems like to you the right thing, because you don't wanna legislate through ordinances. I understand, but it's a tough one. But I would say, in this case, again, I would, I would stress and encourage, let's, let's get him approved, let's send it to council, and let's, let's get something figured out. I agree with you that it needs to be figured out, so...
I have additional concerns. Mr. Reese, um, is your fence, is the smooth side on your side of the fence, between your yard and your neighbor's yard, or is it the other way around?
So on, on, in between my neighbor on the west side, the good side's on my side. And then on the rest of the property, all the studs, all the studs are on the inside of my property. So the side that's on Shalane and the high my neighbor, they got the good side, and the streets got the good side.
So if you've got a, a structure there, and your fence needs repairing, the structure's gonna be in the way?
Only the posts, only the, the two-by-two legs, because I'm not running the sheeting all the way down. The sheeting's only gonna be for the roof. So all those, all those fence pickets, I'll be able to unscrew and redo everything from my side. There's not an issue.
What if your solar units go out on the roof? And you've got that structure there, and somebody can't access the roof on the most convenient side?
Well, we don't access from that side, that's the, that's the ridge side. So that, it'd be kinda silly to go on that side, you'd have to go...
About the dish? What if the dish needs to be repaired, taken down, replaced?
Well, the dish could be moved, I just put it there because that's where the side I picked it from.
Well, but if you have the structure there, it's gonna be hard to get it...
Well, I'm gonna have the dish removed once the structure gets put up, if I gets approved. I'm planning on putting it on the backside where people can't see it.
So where is your inverter for your solar?
Right on that, right, right on that, behind that, that gate right there.
So wouldn't that be impacted by the carport?
Because like I said, the legs are five foot on center, and I'm gonna lay it out to where it's not, the legs are not interfering with the disconnect and the switchgear box there.
How's PG&E getting to read, read your meter?
They usually send me out a courtesy email, and if they need to access it, typically they do a satellite, you know, they, they do everything through satellite nowadays. So typically, in the past, they say, I need to access your backyard, I'm gonna be home between this time. I usually push the button, open the, leave the gate open all day. There's nothing really back there that they could really take, so obviously the gate right open.
I, I, I found that letter kind of interesting myself there, because I, I looked at your picture where you did have the trailer, and you, and, and I don't know how you gotta pass your gutter. That was...
It's actually, you'd be pretty surprised, it looks smaller than what you think it is, so...
But, but my point is, PG&E addressed your, your gas meter and, and suggested putting in bollards to surround it so that you wouldn't hit it. And those, there's a distance, I'm sure, that they say it needs to be, you know, in front of and the sides of those. And I don't know, I, I still not going this way, but I would think that would impact your ability to back it in.
Well, yeah, if they tell me I gotta put a bollard there because I'm gonna put the metal building up, then I really, then I'm gonna have to go with the plan B, I ain't gonna be able to put the building up, but...
Yeah.
But other than that, I mean, like I said, I'm just trying to protect my trailer. And my other option is, is if this don't get approved, I'm just gonna put a shade structure, custom shade structure there, which, it ain't a building, it's just a piece of screen that goes up on top, you know? So there, there's actually ten foot nine in there, so there's actually, when I back up my trailer, I walk just, I got plenty of room to walk between my house and the travel trailer, there's not an issue of getting back there. I mean, and, and, and as far as when I back my trailer all the way back to the back corner of the house, there's over fifty feet from the front, from Genevieve to the front of my trailer. I mean, you're fifty feet off the street, so you can't really see it. Right now, on that picture, you see a picture in the, in the, in the trailer, which, that's an old picture. My trailer don't go up against the fence, it's actually, it goes way back. That's, that, that picture that you see there, that's like a two thousand twelve picture.
Twelve is what it says on there, yeah, two thousand twelve.
That's, that's not even, it don't even look nothing like it now.
We put the one from two thousand twelve, and then we have the one that we took on last week.
And my house is, like I said, it's open to the public. You guys are more willing to go over there to see if you guys wanna check it out. I don't have an issue with it, because that, there's really nothing I'm trying to hide out there anyway, so...
So, um, yeah, some on my phone while we're in a meeting, I apologize, but looking at PG&E's green book.
Uh huh.
Online, at their, uh, bollard, needs to be a minimum of nine inches away from the gas meter. So if you go back and you look at exhibit C, nine inches out, and how wide's your trailer?
Eight feet.
Real close. Real close.
By, by any means, I didn't come in here to, to get anybody in trouble. As far as, I know there's people out there, just, you drive all over this town, there's carports all over. And that's not my intention to come here, I'm just trying to go through the proper channels, just so I don't have an issue. And I know all my neighbors that probably got this letter, that's why they're not here today, is because they told me, why did you do that? Why don't you just put it up? Well, I'm, that's not me, I don't wanna just put it up.
So, Joe, I think you can understand our position as well.
Yeah.
We are not saying, who's this guy coming in here thinking he is? Our job as planning commissioners.
Yeah.
Is to enforce the Escalon Municipal Code.
Perfect, I know.
That's, I think that's what all the commissioners are saying. We applaud you for doing the right thing. But if we get, give you a conditional use permit, then what we have is now we're gonna have, and we grant yours, and then the city goes through, and, and Justin's spare time looks for canopies and carports, then we're gonna have forty, at least forty-four to fifty conditional use permits for this exact same reason. And so I, I think as planning commissioners, we're kind of, uh, screwed either way. Because we can either grant this, and you, everything is hunky-dory, and then people start paying attention to what's happening. Or we deny it, and you appeal to city council, and then city council says, what the heck are the planning commissioners doing? So, I mean, I feel like we're, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. And we under, we, I can't speak for all of my other commissioners, I can, I can speak for myself, that thank you for doing it the right way. It's just, that's what we're struggling with, is are we opening up a can, are we opening up Pandora's box? That's the whole crux of the issue for me.
And it's one thing to get a, a variance or a permit for one thing, and that, or two things, or three things. But when there are several things that, that need variances, and, and even though Councilmember Crumming said this is gonna be invisible behind the gate, it's not gonna be invisible behind the gate. So in addition to the, the variances, there's the aesthetics involved. And, and the fact that you do have an alternative, it's not, this isn't the only option.
Yeah, I, I second or third that, that it's, it seems like it needs to go to the city council, and to have them make a determination on what direction they want for us to go. I mean, you do have different options, I, I mean, I have no problem, I have no issue with the look of it. I'll tell you the truth, I don't have an issue with the setbacks. I mean, I just, it, it's just, it's unfortunate, you're doing everything right, and you're getting...
My only, my only option I got is if this don't get approved, it's just, my trailer's gonna go right back in its spot, and, and it's where it's gonna be. I mean, it's not, you can't see it from the street, so, eh, I'm just, like I said, I was just trying to protect it, and trying to keep my, all my, all my, my house, my trailer, all my toys, trying to keep it look new forever, so, but, it's not a...
I don't think you're, I mean, with the trailer there, or the, or the cover there, you've got the same clearance problems.
Yeah.
It's still, it's still very tight.
Yeah.
Just because there's a structure there, we're requiring a, a setback.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's like Commissioner Sroim said, we're in a tough situation.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, uh, with that, we need to close the public hearing. Is there anybody against the project that, uh, speak at this time? Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this point, do we have any motions from commissioners to proceed with approving any of the variances, or directing staff to reach out to the city council and put that on their agenda?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to table this to the next planning commission meeting until we receive further direction from city council on how to resolve the ongoing carport situation.
We have a motion for that? Is there a second?
The other option is to deny the request, and then he can appeal to city council directly.
Which is where I'm leaning. And, and so I'm just, I'd like to finish up Mr. Strowman's proposal here. Does anybody want to second that, or?
I'll second.
His?
No.
All right.
Getting confusing here.
I tried, Joe.
All right. I too wanted to go to councils, I've said. I, I, as it is right now, I, I can't vote for it. So I make a motion that we deny the application, and suggest that you take this and move it along to the council, because there's going to be more than just these sheds. There's going to be discussions about motorhomes, and boats, and things with gas, and, you know, it, the, the reason it hasn't, in my mind, and I've been to a lot of these meetings, come forward, is it, nobody wanted to touch it, you know? We lost our code enforcement person, I don't know, eight, nine years ago, and haven't had the police department or anybody else out there doing code enforcement, so they just kind of booted it. Well, I think, and I thank you for bringing it forward, and let's not boot it. Let's bring it up to council. So, anyway, that's my, uh, my proposal.
I'll second that motion.
Now, if it goes, if we deny it, and there's the ten-day appeal period?
Yes.
Or would it be on the next city council agenda, or is there a lag time?
There's going to be a lag time, because we're not going to have the time to get it on the next agenda.
Next agenda's on Monday, so it'd have to be at least that, the next meeting after that, at a minimum. But as long as, if there is an appeal, it needs to be submitted within the ten days.
So we have a motion to deny the project, and put it on the city council's agenda, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay?
I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along, we've got our administrative end. And at this point in the meeting, we will open it up to members presented by the audience. The public may address the planning commission anytime for non-agenda-cised items that is within the authority of the commission. Speakers limited by five minutes. Anybody in the audience? Please go up and... Could you state your name and address?
Yes, thank you. My name is Sid Israels, or Sidney Israels. I sent all of you a letter this afternoon. I think I redirected it, Ms. Romo.
Yes, and I did give them a copy.
And I think, I was just thinking, watching the proceedings, that I could really take my tie off, and I don't think anybody would matter. But, you know, I kind of came out of the dugout this afternoon, and so I, we sleep with a tie on, so I decided I'd have to wear it anyway. Probably out of respect, and more importantly, because I'd swept in, I'm old school, what can I tell you? Anyway, did you all receive a copy of my letter this afternoon? You're probably wondering, why are we here? Well, we have been watching proceedings with the planning commission, and also with the city council. And I can save a lot of time, and everyone can go home and watch the Giants or the A's, whatever the game on tonight. If I could ask this a simple question, and I will ask these questions right now, because maybe the answer's already been done. It, it has our neighbor, the Coolmans, received an extension, and is it still in effect, or is the extension terminated? I don't know the answer to that. It's not clear. I watched the proceeding of the city council, and it seemed as though the, the Coolmans had said, we're going to make an application for a conditional use permit, almost as though expecting to receive some kind of extension to avoid having to remove the storage, which is in violation of the C2 zoning, which all of you are familiar with. And I, I heard the councilman tonight, and I also heard everyone being subjected to the zoning requirements, that it should be consistently applied. Is that the case? Is, is the extension still in effect for removal? I guess I would direct that to staff, if that's correct. Or have they actually removed it? As of last evening, I didn't see the removal of the steel, and the beams were not removed, so I asked that question.
Stacy Coleman had come before the council, asking for an extension on the removing of steel beam storage on that lot, pending, going through the process and outcome of applying for a zoning amendment and a conditional use permit.
So I'm just, you know, difference between common sense and horse sense, right? You know, I was told as a kid, growing up not too far from here, that, well, actually pretty far from here, but in Modesto, don't boo. Escalon used to kick our, you know, what's in track. I still remember that very well. I wonder if you're the same, I thought it was Mark Sanchez, was it Sparks or Cozy, but I remember that very well. So the question I have, and I suppose it's a simple question, you know, what's the difference between common sense and horse sense, right? Well, my dad taught, told me that common sense is what keeps horses from betting on people. In other words, horse sense seems to be something that you don't want to use under any circumstances. So when our clients, Shanlar, represented tonight by the Grossi family, and I include all the Grossis, because I've known them for, even before those two were born there, they made a very strong pitch, and are really making improvements in the process, if you go there to see what they're doing on that property. You know, they're, they're native Uson people. They've been working with, thank you Dominic, and thank you Tammy, and the people here. Fantastic cooperation. And you all got a copy. Did you see this letter that they wrote on May 23rd? Just if you haven't received it, I have an extra copy. It takes a few minutes, it'd be nice to just look at it, and, and wow.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Thank you, I'm sorry. I'm not like Pacelli, right? I like to...
I, I can't hear you without it.
I have the same deal, sorry about that. So, we try, put our best foot forward, and just take a few seconds to read, it's not that long, what those commitments are going to be. Much like the applicant tonight.
Can you address any of them?
Property, which I was also impressed. We are going through the steps of following the rules, and the very good guidelines established to uphold the zoning laws, which is what commissioners do. I respect you for that.
Can I sharpen this pencil and get it down to the nub here quick?
Sounds like you're going to...
We're, we're, we're not here to address this issue tonight. What you, what we would ask you to do is come to the next council meeting, which is Monday, and present all of this to the council. They're the ones that voted, whether or not to give an extension. We, it hasn't come from us, or it has not come to us yet.
No, you're absolutely right. And the reason we're here tonight is out of respect for the planning commission to do things correctly. And we're out to do this because we don't want the kind of situation that puts you in that dilemma of, of this applicant that he had to go through tonight. We want to show you the respect. We want to go through the processes, and keep our word. When our clients are committed to do something, we keep our word. We want you to know, so this doesn't come back on you the next time, that we are following the processes and the zoning code, and have established that. That's all we're doing. And I think it's important, even though you should watch the presentation that was made to the city council. Why? In my opinion, you have a staff, and I'm speaking for the staff right now, and I have a few years of experience representing staff, representing people involved, municipal government, and so forth, and county governments, as you may know. And what happens is, they work their hardest to try to follow the code and enforce the code. And if you watch that presentation, and I know councilman was there and heard it, it put everybody in a, in a surprise. It's a strategy. Don't really make an application, but let's work on them a little bit, and see if they will extend that application. If they, if they will extend the requirement to remove the storage, which has not been done. It's worse.
Mr. Israels, have you and your client attempted to discuss this with the Coolmans at all?
Yes, we have.
And?
And it even goes one step further.
Okay.
Even goes one step further. We have a relation, they had a relationship, which he mentioned in our city council meeting, and again, we will go to the city council. We'll present these facts. We're just doing this out of respect to you, so that you're not caught by surprise, and the staff isn't caught by surprise. There are many nuances to this. And the answer is, not only have we discussed it, we discussed it with their attorney, when they did not exercise their option to buy parcels 39 and 40. We gave them the respect to allow them to decide whether to exercise to buy that property. We were told, in reliance, that in doing our due diligence, and I feel, you know, my background is as business real estate attorney, and my job is to do my due diligence for my client. I didn't have to. My client said, you know, we did our due diligence. We were told that they would remove that property. We'll go forward and expend and help Randy's family, you know, his father, who's a widower, to help him to build a shed on his home, and to do everything he was going to do, so he could retire with dignity. And this was all done among friends. The Coolmans knew all this. They knew everything that we were doing. And to say yesterday, that the comments that were made at the city council, and, excuse me, when I watched the video today, I thought to myself, they were just testing the waters. They were, did that at the planning commission, and they did it at the city council. Make a formal application, but enforce the code. You're being put in a situation, and I realized it this afternoon, someone has to tell you, you know, like the emperor's wearing the clothes and so forth, someone has to stand up and say, hey, you are planning commissioners. You are staff. And if you're going to be undermined by decisions you make to enforce the code, then when you're right, Commissioner Strowman, when you sign, I think it was you, said, you know, I, I was sworn to uphold code. It was, it was Mr. Danziger, Mr. Danziger.
We're, we're all sworn to do that.
I know that. I get, I get so mad, that, you know, you're sworn. And I think, from my perspective, you need to know what's going on. This is a small community. It is a small community. And if there's, if there's a breakoff, as of today, that should have been removed. Last night, you talk about code enforcement, to show you where this goes, to speak to you so you understand the dilemma we're all in. When we went out to the site last night, what did I see on that property? Sure, there's no storage, but you know what I saw? And I have video of it. I couldn't believe it. You know what a reefer is? Well, I know, I went to Berkeley, but not that kind of reefer. But you know what a reefer is? It's a refrigerated truck, and it was out there running. The cab was gone on their property. I want you to think about these. I want you to ask yourself those questions.
So, Mr.?
You go to the council. I will not speak anymore. I will answer any questions that you have, if you are interested, and I know you are. But trust me, we will force and make sure that this code is enforced for everyone. So it's equally enforced. You don't have to worry about how many police officers are out there. It's law, and that's what we do.
So, I guess my point is, everybody, all of our constituents in Escalon know that code enforcement is complaint-driven. So...
What?
It's complaint-driven. So if your client has a legitimate complaint, has that code enforcement complaint been submitted to the city?
We have expressed to the city our concerns on several occasions, as Ms. Romo will indicate. We have sent letters.
Okay, but has the, has the formal?
We want it, we were assured, and it's not the fault of the staff, they're only following the guidelines, that on this August 10th, which was forty-five days from the June letter, which they received, that they would have this eyesore removed. Our client purchased the property, wants to build a beautiful and do something with Roosevelt Dad, and he's already starting. You go and look at it. And in the process of doing that, they find out, they pull the rug, the rug's pulled out. Nope, we're just, just extend it further. Why not extend it further? Well, it might take twenty-four trucks to pull those loads of steel out of there. Well, you know what? How many of you have ever had twenty-four hours to vacate a building because of certain things that had to occur? I have in my lifetime. You do it. Not fun, but you do it.
So is the answer yes, a formal?
Well, if you're asking for simple answers to a very complicated problem, yes, we have notified them. And excuse me for expanding upon it, but I think you should know.
Okay.
You know, as an official, as commissioner, that this is going on in your community.
Okay, with, with that.
That's all I want to say. And thank you for giving us the opportunity, truly respect you.
This is the first I've heard, that Shanlar was not in favor of what the Coolmans wanted or were doing.
No, I don't think that's, that's not what we're saying. That's not, if you're saying, not in favor of, of doing...
I mean, the, the Coolmans have purchased property, and they've got plans that they're going forward with.
They didn't purchase it yet. They purchased a house. They claimed they're going to put an office on there for sixteen thousand dollars.
They're leasing to own.
They're leasing the balance of the property, and have to exercise the option to acquire it. They're probably testing the waters. But that has nothing to do with the fact they were told to remove, they've had days and time to, to follow the C2 zoning requirement, which they were told, that they had to remove this. In the meantime, we went ahead, our client purchased the property, did its necessary due diligence, did everything the city requested. We've done our part, paid our money, did what we were supposed to do. I personally looked at the contracts, the due diligence was done, and almost as if, we don't have to do this, because we're going to make an application. You know what that reminds me of? That reminds me of that story, the music man. There's no trombones, there's no music, but we're going to have a band. So everybody should just go along and ignore the rules.
So if they get their permits and they pay their money, do their plans conflict with what Shanlar wants to do?
Well, it may not, but it is our understanding, in watching the video, that they would like to use the property for the same purposes, maybe add something to it, and find additional uses. Meantime, meantime, they have not removed the storage. That was the rules. That's, you know, you play the rules by the game. It's not fun. You know, I was just thinking that this afternoon. The Russians launched another missile, you know, and the North Koreans launched it. And I, it does, it's, those kinds of things do affect local government, because it says to you, well, we can just get away with it. We can do what we want to do.
Okay.
They have not, they have not removed materials. I, I say, remove the materials, and then make your application. But don't make that one of the same.
If, if you're not satisfied with how fast staff is moving on this issue, because we can't address you.
We are very satisfied.
All right, well, then I, then I...
It's the decision of the council that was to allow them to keep this still there while they go through the process.
Exactly, and that's where you need to address this.
So while we understand, staff understands, and the planning commission understands, there was a deadline set of August 10th. The council at the last meeting did approve that they did not have to remove it, providing that they did submit their application to start the process for the zoning change by August 15th.
Well, that's it, that's our answer.
So, and that was, and that was the decision of the city council.
Exactly. And, and, and that, if I were a member of the planning commission, I'm, I'm... And, and that, if I were a member of the planning commission, I'm, I'm letting you know, this may not be on the agenda item, it may not be there. But you know what? I hate, over the years, I've been proven unfortunately true on a lot of other issues, whether it's the city councils of Stockton, Adesto, whatever. And I can see here a similar lack of communication, a lack of understanding of the need to enforce. And you yourself said on the last applicant, how that's, makes it difficult for you. So we're just giving you aheads up, we're letting you know what's going on. Thank you, Tammy, for the, Ms. Lekander, for giving the truth on this thing. Our client wasn't sure this afternoon, but there's your answer. They've been granted another extension, because they can make an application in front of that. And there's, I don't know if you need a third-party arbitrator, you need someone to come in and look at your administrative government here, what you're doing. But I'm just telling you, from over years of experience, there needs to be validation of those people that are charged to enforce your zoning. Whether I represent a Mr. Rossi, or anybody else for that matter, you understand what I'm saying. I hope I'm making myself clear. And we will take the city council, and we'll bring it to the attention, and hopefully lots of citizens will attend that hearing to demand consistency in the zoning application enforcement. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any staff communications?
Commissioners, I did wanna bring up the accessory building ordinance. Over the last year, year and a half, we have had several applications for variances, conditional use permits, people seeking changes to the accessory building ordinance. Commissioner Danziger, at the last meeting, you were fairly clear about, you know, we've, we've been exercising more conditional use permits, more variances. Maybe we need to open the code and look at making some changes, so that these are now allowed. People don't need to come and ask for these special planning processes. And that was one, you know, one commissioner's expression at the meeting. So I wanted to take this time to ask, if there's a consensus amongst the commissioners, that maybe we should open the ordinance, take a look at it, see if we should make changes to these sections. We can do our public hearing notices in the newspaper, and on the next agenda, open up that code, discuss the different sections, see if anything should change. I've noticed, going back over the applications for that last year, year and a half, the things that are most commonly asked for exceptions are the height of buildings and the setbacks, typically in the rear yard. We've seen the patios that have come through in the past, three of them, that have wanted lesser rear yards than ten feet. So I guess I just, if there's a consensus among the commission that, yeah, let's open it up and take a look and see if any changes need to be made at this time, that doesn't change that carports in the side yard, which we know have been an issue for years and years, can still go to council at the next meeting and get some clarification on that. That doesn't change our ability to do this at the next planning commission meeting, because accessory buildings are in chapter seventeen, which is zoning. So it would go to planning commission first for recommendation, and then to city council for approval.
I'm all in for it. I'm all for it. Just what we went through tonight is just another example of us needing better clarification on what direction the city wants to go. It's unfortunate that we have to put on our commissioner's hat and read the code and deny relevant projects that really don't have any other reason except for the code not to move forward, in my opinion. So yes, I think that's a good idea.
It's always hard to tell your child no. You know, you don't wanna do that, you don't wanna say no to anybody. But there are codes, there are standards, and there's a reason for that. And you can't hire a code enforcement person, have them go out and do their job, and then not support that person, whoever it may be. If the council's not gonna support staff and the decisions they make in a lawful manner, you got chaos. And I was gonna hold this off for, for our discussion from the commission. But this is what happens when you don't follow the procedures, when you have people that come up during matters presented from the audience, and they, they say what they have to say, that's fine, and that's done. You don't agendize that, because nobody else has been notified that that's coming on this meeting. And if you, if you have a staff communication, and you, you have somebody presenting, you know, a skate park, you know, for an hour, and nobody's been, you know, maybe somebody wants another football field or a baseball field. If you don't give them an opportunity to show up and hear about it, you're cutting these corners. And, and people start, you know, getting shaky, like, well, nobody's gonna support me, because they don't follow procedures. And, you know, we're not here trying to hurt anybody's situation, but we've got, you've gotta have those procedures. If you don't, it's chaos, and why bother being here? You don't need a commission, you don't need staff, you, you really don't even need a council. You can just say, hey, this is the free state of Escalon, do whatever you want, you know? We're not gonna have a fire department, you don't have to pay your property taxes, so if you burn your neighbor's house down, whatever. And that's going from A to Z, but you see my point. I, I can appreciate the fact that they've got something to say, and I'm glad they said it, but we can't act on that. You know, if, if that's how they feel, then that should get on the agenda, say it to the council, you know? Say, give them your displeasure on how, how they did it. And if that had been agendized, and, you know, for those people, and maybe it was, I don't remember, this guy should have shown up, you know, and said something. That would have been the time to do that. That's the way the procedure should work, in my opinion, though.
As I look at this particular section of the code, I don't have a problem with the heights, the setbacks, the figures that are there. And I'm imagining that they were derived at through logic and common sense. But on the other hand, if somebody could step forward and say, hey, you know, like if you look back over your year, and so many people say, well, this isn't enough, or this is too much, yeah, I'd like to hear that from somebody, you know, in an official capacity, that, that this, this amount of feet is, is too high or too low. But as it stands right now, I mean, I mean, anybody's gonna argue with, you know, it needs to be this, it needs to be that. But if we've got a, like an inspector or somebody to say, it really needs to stay this way, or it could be changed to this because, but if you've got people, you know, wanting it to be thirteen and twenty-seven and fifteen and, you know, I mean, if you've got a big variation, you have to pick a number.
Right.
A common sense number.
Even when we had code enforcement, and I go back to the Einhorn Building, or at the library, this came up a long time ago. And some of the people that are on council are still on it, and their concern was the same thing. You know, these things are popping up all over, they really make the neighborhoods look, you know, chunky, and they don't look good. And I got up and I said, where are you gonna stop? Are you gonna stop with the, the building? Are you gonna stop with a boat that's got fuel in it, you know, with no setback next to the house? You know, where do you go? And it just, that kinda killed it, you know? And, and then it comes up every now and then, and there was a code enforcement person at that time, and I don't think he was gonna get, or she, I don't remember.
She?
Yeah, she was gonna get support from, from the city, if she went out and started writing those things up. So it's, you know, that's a sticky issue. And I come from a code enforcement background. If I had to live under that, I wouldn't, I'd have left. We did, we did fire, building, planning, and public works, you know? We did all of those code inspections there, and it just morphed over time. It created it there, but we always had support. Don't go out, you know, it's not the code according to you, it's the code according to the code, and that's it. If you don't know it, don't say it. Come back, review it, and then give the people the right answer. So, you know?
I have a second question. Number F. The last sentence, attached patio covers that encroach into a twenty-foot rear setback? I thought were now ten feet.
So yeah, F says that attached patio covers can have a ten-foot, and that was changed two, three years ago. Used to be twenty feet, same as the house. So it did allow for the ten-foot setback on a patio cover. But if you are at ten feet, between ten feet and your house at twenty feet, you can't convert that to living space. Some people build the patio, and then they put walls on it and turn it into a bedroom. So you can't have any living space within twenty feet of your rear fence. But you can't have a patio within that.
You can have a patio.
You can have a patio within that rear twenty feet, but you cannot turn it to living space.
So if I was building a house, I cannot build it within ten feet of my back fence?
No, it has to be at twenty feet.
Okay. Just the patio, okay.
Yeah.
So yeah, you could add the house and then put the patio within the ten, but you can't convert the patio to take up that ten as living space.
Kind of along that line, but not living. Remember the woman that came in here with her contractor and wanted, this was a couple of years ago? And she goes, I wanna put my patio cover, you know, I think it was within, she had to be fifteen feet away or twenty feet, and she went?
It used to be twenty, and she wanted the ten.
Ten. And they changed the code. We changed the code. And boom, she did it right, too. You know, that's how things get done. You know, this isn't a dictatorship, it's a democracy. You got an issue, you know, come through the channels, do it the right way, because once we change it, we do it for everybody.
Right.
You know, that's why I, I said I was about parents.
Well, and then a thought occurred to me, when you talked about that was changed a couple of years ago. We don't wanna look at this, you know, and, and just constantly change it. It'd be nice if we could decide on it and, and not, not keep changing it.
So are we fine with these numbers as they are, or do we want to open it? Make changes?
I think before we decide that, can we get some additional information from staff as far as what we've been seeing as far as these distances over the last few years?
Yeah. And then we can? Go back and look at prior projects and say, you know, we approved this one at this many feet, this one at this many feet. I've also fielded calls, probably five or six over the last year or two, of people who've wanted to do a patio cover, a shed. Couldn't work with the setbacks that we have, and didn't wanna pay the thousand dollars to come before planning commission and, and ask the chance, because we always tell them there is no guarantee, it's not refundable, if your project's not approved, you don't get your thousand dollars back. And they just didn't think it was worth trying. So there are other people out there who, if the code was changed, maybe would be able to do their project, but just didn't want to come and do the application process. So I can kinda put that information together.
Well, and this is a different code, but like councilmember Crummick pointed out, there might be trends, or the way that things are going in building materials, and so even though we've got it, that it can't be this, can't be that. And, and, you know, anybody in the construction trade could, could know those things. And I'd be curious to know, what are people asking for that, that we are saying you can't do? I mean, is it the same thing over and over again, or is there a multitude of, and should we maybe look at that code, too, that section?
I can check with the building inspector and see what he's feeling. So maybe we advertise it for the next meeting, and then we'll gather this research information to bring. We can discuss it, and if you want to make changes to it, that's the time, at least it's advertised, and the public can come and give their input on it. And if you decide no changes, then we make no changes.
So that's just us and not city council?
If you make changes, they would still need to go to?
I think, I think we, before we open a public hearing, we need to know what the city council feels about Mr. Reese's situation. Because that?
Go to the council meeting.
That, that actually has some, some bearing on which way I would feel about the accessory buildings.
Well, and that would be before our next meeting.
Okay. But I'm saying, if we have, we have what the city council determines with Mr. Reese's situation, and then we have this backup, then we can figure out what to do from there.
We won't bring it to the next, we'll bring it to the next planning commission, following any decisions made from appeals. How's that? Okay. Thank you.
Was there something else under staff communications, Diana?
I'm now assistant planner.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, so let's move on to council communications. Do we have anything to add? Maybe Commissioner Danzer?
Commission? Communications?
Yes, is that what I said?
He's the council, and I, and I made that mistake myself, and I was, I was reprimanded by the way I said.
Commission.
I know what you mean. You know, it was brought up at the council meeting, you know, where we stand with Lear. And I, you know, I know they're behind a fence like that, but I don't see any activity over there. Are they paying that twenty-five hundred dollars a month still?
They are.
And did they have to pay the fifty thousand dollars, because they didn't meet the original timeframe? Or is that?
They will.
If they pull the permit?
When they pull the permit, they would have to pay that money, yes.
Okay. The only other thing I'd like to talk about is, I know state law has changed regarding, I think it's solar, has to be in new construction, or be part of new construction.
Twenty-twenty.
Yeah, and, and you know, about ten years, too late. I would like to, when we review the codes and submit them for council, to put an amendment to whatever it's, the building code or mechanical code, that we also include hot water recirculating pumps on water heaters. And, and I struggle with, you know, size of the building, and I just, you know, throw out fifteen hundred feet, square feet. You know, it wouldn't affect accessory use buildings of that kind. It would make it a, a long enough draw in, in a residence, that it would actually be something. And it's not, you know, you don't have your bathroom right next to your water heater, so that would work fine. But like my house, you know, it's eighteen hundred square feet. Shower I use on the other side of the house there, I, I put one of those in there, and I used to wait five minutes for that water to warm up. Now I just jump right in, and it's, it's at every faucet, it's at every shower. And I, I think we should include that. I know there's gonna be people saying, oh, add to the price of the house, it reduced the amount of water, the house is drying. There's gonna be further restrictions in the future. I, I think it's, should kinda go with, with the solar. These houses gotta get smarter, you know, less waste, and?
Why wouldn't you just put in an Instahot?
Well, that, that, maybe an either-or, I don't know.
Instahot would be a heck of a lot cheaper and less maintenance than putting in a recirc pump.
Well, put your two cents in, please. You know what I'm saying? Well, e- even if you have an Instahot, will it put water at the other side of the house instantly?
In a matter of five seconds, ten seconds?
Okay, so it's, it's on the same type of principle, it's recirculating.
Yeah.
When I had mine put in, my recirculating pump, I looked into Instahots, and there's like two or three different kinds you can do. And it wasn't recommended for existing structures, because you do, you do those at the time the house is built. That's when it's most optimum to do that. So, you know, I'm throwing this thing out there, I think we need to have, quit wasting water. If, if Instahot, new construction is a better way to go.
Are you talking about tankless hot water heater?
Yes.
He is.
Okay. I built my home thirty years ago, I put an instant hot water heater in. It was pioneering, didn't work. Had to put a standard. I went to put in a new instant hot water heater, had to go to half-inch gas lines. I had to cut a bigger hole in my new, brand-new metal roof. I decided not to do what's gonna cost me almost six thousand dollars before I bought the equipment to have it installed. So?
Mine, I paid mine with my income tax money back, it was eight hundred dollars from a plumber that was local, because I wanted to go local. And I found out later, I could have had it done for four hundred. You know, I'm just giving you personal experience here, but, and I don't even know what they cost now, but it's tremendous.
Why?
And it's been?
You're talking about the circulating pump.
Yeah.
I think?
Been five years, I've never had a problem.
From what I'm hearing, the twenty-twenty code that's coming out is gonna be pretty revolutionary. It's gonna make a lot of changes to residential construction, so maybe it's in the code already. I don't know.
If not, let's, let's put it there. If not, let's, let's put it there. And I'm not married to either one, you know? I think that'd be good. The object is to get, you know, use as less, least water you can, as energy efficiently as you can. And that was my point. Thank you.
This is kinda thrown out to staff and City Councilperson. Saturday, I went to a little kid's soccer out on Hogan Field. It was insane, I'm trying to find parking. My wife mentioned that that might be a good venue to pass out flyers about supporting the proposed new city park, you know? I mean, I mean, the parking lot across the church was filled. I mean, it was, people, yeah, it was, I haven't been there, haven't been to a facility on a Saturday in a long time, and I was blown away on how.
So, at the last council meeting, there was the topic about the skate park on there, which is part of the new property. And the Parks Foundation has raised, they said they've indicated they have about sixty thousand dollars.
They've raised over eight years.
And we have about four hundred thousand in our impact fees for parks and recreation. Two hundred thousand of that has been allocated for, to redo the parking lot at the community center, just basically repave it. But we've also looked, are looking at pulling trees out of the orchard and putting in like an overflow parking. It wouldn't be a completely developed parking lot, but putting some parking over there, approximately thirty to thirty-five thousand. But the discussion ended with, we are going to have a public hearing on September third on what to do with those funds, really. It was proposed to allocate all of those funds to the Parks Foundation, which was established to help with fundraising for the community parks. And their first primary goal was to get the skate park. So it was proposed to give them all of the funding that we have, and potentially pull from the city's general fund reserves to help complete all of those three projects, the community center, parking lot, the overflow parking, and the skate park. So there will be a public hearing on September third. But we, we do know, I mean, about the parking issue out there, and, yeah, I mean, we need that, we need the, I guess, the the avenue for, to gain support in developing that park. If you're gonna do a fundraising effort, would be relied upon probably from that Parks Foundation because that is what it was developed for.
Another question that came up is, I, somebody was mentioned, so there's a big push about a skate park. And, and over the last couple of years, I have not seen a whole lot of kids riding around on skateboards. Has the city thought about maybe putting in the water bill or something to have a questionnaire on, you know, what are the three top things you'd like to see developed in the community center?
That was the crux of the problem. And it actually goes back to what I brought up tonight. During staff communications, not an agendized item, up came this proposal from one of the council people to.
Well, first, let me clarify, it was on the agenda.
Tell them what was on the agenda.
It was on there for discussion.
And the people from the skate park showed up, and they did, I don't know, about an hour. Nobody here was notified that they were gonna be here presenting a case to take either, and it was proposed, that we do an inter-fund loan, take money out of the transportation fund, take a one-time hit from the general fund. For this, this is for the skate park, which is outside the city limits, still in the county, and/or drain the Parks and Recreation money. And I had to get up, and I had to say, well, timeout. You haven't allowed anybody else to have an opinion and talk about parking. Maybe, maybe they wanna do all the parking in this park first. Maybe Angelo would like to stand up and say, why don't we sell half this orchard and fund these projects? So a lot of ideas weren't being brought out at that meeting because it wasn't, quite frankly, it wasn't there. I would ask you to go look at the YouTube, see it yourself. And then if you're interested at all what's gonna go out at Hogan Park, show up to that September third meeting, because.
So among staff, we have talked about, to get back to your question about, like, maybe a poll. So among staff, we have talked about that, about putting out the questionnaire, specifically recently with the skate park coming up. And so, you know, we could do it on Facebook. I think that sometimes we actually get more response from our Facebook than we do from the newsletter. So for sure, we will utilize Facebook to put it out there about the public hearing, too.
And I think rather than just put it down under Public Announcements in that real fine print in the Escalon Times, that there's an actual article there by Marge that talks about that.
So I know that Marge did ask follow-up from the council meeting, and I kind of laid the land on everything that went down, and that there would be a public hearing. So we'll see tomorrow. I mean, I gave her some pretty detailed information about it. So I'm hoping, you know, that it would make it in her article to help with the circulation of the information. But we are also doing an advertisement, too.
Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Just for my curiosity, our last meeting was pretty.
Chaotic.
Chaotic, yes. Has that business owner come through with any guarantee on the?
So, we actually met with the business owner and the real estate agent, and we had two council members in there, too. And the, we did come to an agreement. He is actually going to do a five thousand dollar deposit, and the attorney has drawn up an agreement that he has six months to do the improvements. And if he doesn't do the improvements, then we would have the right to lien the property and take care of putting in the improvements. But part of the meeting.
Whoa, 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 what does that mean?
Part of the, hold on just a minute. Part of the meeting was also to meet with the engineer and Public Works Superintendent to identify exactly what the storm drain improvements were needed and those things. So it, the agreement, what do you mean by?
No, no, you said they're gonna put down a deposit. They got six months to do the, or submit.
Make the improvements.
Submit the plans, get the permits, get it improved. Or the city will lien the property and do the improvements themselves?
Correct.
And then we'd lien them for the amount.
So are you saying that it would come out of the general fund? Or some other fund to make those improvements?
Potentially, is the same way that if we have to do code enforcement, it would be, it's the same process. The council passes a resolution. Well, actually, in this case, I don't think we would have to do a resolution because it's part of the contract with him. It's part of a legal document.
I was just thinking that, I thought we were under the impression that they were going to get a total presented by our engineer to put up a security bond for, and if they hadn't done it by, whatever the time was, six months, that the city was gonna draw on those monies to actually do the work.
So, yeah, based on what is in our code for securities, this was another avenue that we could, we could also do. So it was, it was an avenue to secure it. And, I mean, my, our understanding is the property owner still has some other work to do before the tenant can move in also.
I can tell you right now, Tammy, that the amount of work that was being proposed is nowhere near five thousand dollars.
Well, I understand that.
That's kind of concerning that if he ignores it, then you're pulling five thousand dollars. That's gonna be a huge hit to the general fund.
Well, but you lien the property.
Okay.
And so then that comes on their property tax, and they have to pay it through that.
Okay.
And you guys can obviously do whatever you need to be doing. I just think, given their track record of not doing what they're supposed to be doing, you're letting them off the hook again, like this gentleman was talking. They, he's gonna say, go ahead and lien my property, and I'm never gonna pay you anyway. I just, that's kind of the attitude that I saw, that you do whatever you'd like. It's, you know, that's your call.
Yes, Commissioner Willis?
With regard to what Steve said, my husband has been in the capacity of the volunteer with the PD out in front of Dent School for the last several days, making sure that people knew where to go and where they couldn't go. And every time he saw a high schooler go by on a skateboard, he asked him, if we had a park, would you use it? Hundred percent yes. So even though I don't know anybody who would use it, I, and I go into other communities, and the parks aren't being used. But I think it's, like, Hogan Field isn't used a hundred percent of the time. There are times when it is in use and times when it's not. So it sounds like it will be used once it gets made. Second thing, next to the American Legion Hall, somebody was moving in a chest of drawers and a mattress and a whatnot. What's, what's in that building now?
Nothing is supposed to be in that building.
It's an odd phenomenon.
We'll have to follow up on that.
Yeah, the mattress is inside leaning up against the window, you can see it easily, but I was curious. Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner's rolling?
I'm thinking.
Are you gonna abstain?
No, I'm thinking. The only thing I can think of is, really wanna wish all the students and staff at Escalon USD a safe, healthy school year coming up. And give a shout-out to all those students that are starting TK in kindergarten, especially my son, Declan.
And Jenny's son, and Diana's son.
Yeah. Son.
My next year.
It was a party at Dent last week. We could've had a, couldn't have a Planning Commission at that meeting, at kindergarten, but, you know. On a more serious note, the, Mr. Reese, thanks for taking the time to come here and trying to do things the right way. But counter to that, it sounds like the Coolmans and Shanlar have some issues that they need to work out. And I would appreciate in future meetings that try not to get us involved in a dispute between two property owners that frankly, we have no jurisdiction we can't get involved in. So I appreciate Mr. Wendell Rose, or Mr. Israel's typing up this great letter, but we can't do anything with it, so, thank you.
Well, we can't do anything with it now. If they come back to the Planning Commission with a conditional use permit and a variance, then we will be addressing it soon.
We'll cross that bridge, I'll get to it.
Okay, great, thank you, everybody. And with that, we adjourn the meeting at nine o'clock.